Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right. Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January 24th. It's about 7:45. And we just came from executive session regarding pilot negotiations. We are short one board member tonight. Stephanie Fisher had a family.
She was able to attend.
She would have rather have attended. A little sickness in the family she had to attend to, so. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing on local law amending Chapter 162 and Chapter 250, Section 4.1 of the Village Code concerning the construction and installation of oil burning equipment, gas burning equipment, and fuel storage tanks. So can I please have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. I know we had discussed this previously, but for the public, maybe a little background on this. And this, I know this has to do partially with Con Ed's decision.
Yeah, well, I'd say part of this has to do with back in 2019 when Con Ed stopped accepting applications for new gas connections in most of the Westchester service area, Rybrook included. So now you're getting other types of installations that are going in, and a lot of it ends up being above ground and outside of the homes. So now we want to make sure that the above-ground installations that are outside are placed where other equipment is located, be placed where there's appropriate screening, kind of co-located where possible. Also, it was because the code was silent on where those could be located outside, so in theory, you could have one in a front yard, for instance. So this would make it consistent with other types of equipment where it would have to be on the side or the rear yard. It couldn't be closer to the neighbor's home than it is to the homeowner that's actually using it, and also requires screening through that process as well.
Thank you, Chris. I think, you know, I think we can all be in agreement that we want this treated the same way we would treat other structures that might be put up around the houses. Really, this is for protection of neighbors and also making sure that everything is done right when it is installed. So this is a public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public?
I would mention we did receive a comment.
Okay.
And that comment, it's in our backup for the agenda. We added it today. And that's from former trustee Joe Polino. And in that, he raised a couple of questions. One is he wanted to make sure it was clear that this didn't regulate propane gas tanks on, like, you know, small ones, barbecue grills, stuff like that, which it does not.
It does not.
And the other part is...
I think we discussed that at the last line. I think that was discussed at the last meeting.
And the other comment was, you know, if, are the current ones grandfathered in? If they replace them? And the answer to that would be no, as currently drafted. If it's something that was replaced, it has to be replaced as per code. So you'd have to, if you were replacing the equipment and where it was going to be located and how it was going to be screened, you would have to do the appropriate requirements under the new set of code if it's adopted as is. And in discussion of that with our counsel, Drew Gammels, who's here tonight, Drew looked at some of the local law based on those comments and also had some thoughts. Do you want to kind of touch on that?
Sure. So, you know, I know that the resident added a concern about not being clear what the scope of the law is. And one thing the Board of Trustees could consider to address that would be adding a definitions section to this chapter to define oil and gas burning equipment. This chapter, Chapter 162, has never had definitions, but that's not to say that we can't add them now that we're amending the entire chapter. I looked at, I kind of surveyed what other municipalities do when they're regulating the similar type of equipment. I'd say maybe 50/50 about who has definitions and who does not have definitions. But just thinking if the board believes it necessary to clarify the scope to make sure that everybody knows, for example, that, you know, your barbecue gas tanks aren't regulated by this. Maybe a definitions section could be helpful. The other suggestion I was thinking about today was that this law does not allow for variances. So right now, it's very similar to what we do for generators. But if a generator cannot comply, say, with the rear yard and side yard requirement, say it's on a corner lot and they're just going to be in the front yard because they have two front yards, they go to the ZBA and they get a variance. Well, for other oil and gas equipment under Chapter 162, there is no variance option. So we might want to add a provision that would allow for variances because this is outside of zoning. This is Chapter 162, and you would just use the same language that a variance could be applied for to the ZBA. As I said, I'd write it more nicer than what I just said.
That's fair. I think that's fair. What about air conditioning compressors? Have they fallen underneath this? Now, where is that going to play? And now, you know, heat pumps are becoming very popular. So it's a whole another, that's another piece of equipment, right? We have a compressor.
Yeah, that's not regulated under this.
Right.
Under this, but under the zoning code, there are regulations for where equipment like that is placed.
Site plan approval?
Site plan approval, not required in all cases, but they're supposed to be...
With next to each other?
Exactly, next to each other on the side of the house. But that's in the zone, that's regulated in the zoning code under a separate...
One thing this, the one thing this proposed local law does do, though, in terms of like generate, in terms of like air conditioning equipment, is it does encourage that there's an ability to co-locate new equipment with existing outdoor equipment like air conditioners to try to co-locate them together in the same areas.
But okay, so you need plan review for the generator and for the gas, the propane tank on the ground, correct?
Not all the time. Only, only in certain circumstances. So site plan review is only required if you're going to be in a commercial district or a multifamily use in a residential district.
Okay, not residential, not residential homes.
Not regular residential homes. But again, that's going to be looked at internally by the building department. The building inspector will evaluate.
Or that has to meet the certain requirements, of course.
Exactly. And that's why we have very detailed requirements for where that can go, so that the building inspector kind of has a checklist of, do you satisfy these requirements? Versus those, it's 162 for B, that's, that's the non-site plan, and then you have 162 for A, and that's when the planning board's going to get involved and look at where these are going and make sure they're placed appropriately.
Okay.
And screened, I should say, as well.
My personal opinion, I don't think we need a definitions section to really cover just the propane for the barbecue. I think, I think we're okay. How does everyone feel about the variance? I mean, it's, and it does raise a good point of when you're, I mean, it's, when you're replacing, there is an opportunity to then bring things up to code, which is what we would want. Where, but we do have the variance with the generators. So my personal opinion is we probably should be consistent.
So you're going to make people move things when they're updating their equipment? Like we want stormwater for the, when they redo their houses, but we're not getting...
No, but like, for instance, say there's no, so let me give you a, for instance, say you have equipment, you're replacing, it's already outdoor and outside and above.
Already permitted.
You may have to put screening around it, you know, something would be, as an example.
They're already, I don't...
What's there? Well, this is an option. We're just telling you how it's currently drafted. If the board has different policies, then you can adjust that, and the local law would be changed to reflect that.
Right. Right now, so what we're saying, right now, the law is written that if you are updating your equipment, you would have to meet the new code. What we're saying is there's a possibility where we can write in the ability for them to apply for variance.
Sure.
And this does not apply to existing equipment that's already out there in place? That's, that's fine. That's going to be permitted. It's when you're going to be taking it away and replacing it where, you know, the village is going to seek compliance with the new requirements.
So what I'm saying is if I need to have new equipment installed in place of my current equipment, that is when I'm coming into this review, perhaps?
Yes. Well, you'd need a permit anyway to, to make those changes.
And that would be the same for a compressor of an air conditioning unit? If I updated my compressor, my air conditioning unit, I'd have to come...
I'm sure you're probably doing electrical at a minimum, right?
You're doing a permit, you're doing a permit process.
Yeah, you got a permit, but do you have...
Chances are, you're probably putting that right exactly in the same place.
Well, that's what you'd be doing that with a generator, too.
No, it's probably going to make code because with a compressor, you want it as close as possible because you're losing, you know...
But you would do the same thing with a generator. You put it in the same spot.
This does, this has to do with, this doesn't have to do with generators.
This is not about generators.
Or compressors. This...
The law hasn't changed with respect to compressors or generators.
No, but you, did you say if you had, if you replaced it, so if I replaced a generator...
That's not in this law.
It's not in this law.
That's right, okay.
No, this, this has to do with oil burning equipment and gas burning equipment and fuel storage tanks.
And it was just, the reason this came up, one of the reasons is generators have these same requirements, and it was interesting to know that generators have to comply with these site requirements, but oil and gas burning equipment did not. And so it just didn't seem even.
Right. People should also be careful, though, with the gas equipment. You're not supposed to put vegetation too close to it because it burns it.
Mm-hmm, exhaust.
So you can put it. It has to be screened, but it cannot be next to it.
Yeah. Right, okay.
I learned that from, I think, Mr. Noack taught me that years ago. And I can tell you that it is true.
Before or after the fire?
So it sounds like if the board, I think the suggestion on the table is to not include definitions, but add a variance provision. So if that is something the board would like, then you should give direction to council. You can close the public hearing if you want to, or you could leave it open, and then you could act up, but you can't act on it tonight. You'd have to act on it at the next meeting.
They have to file, it should cost them a lot of money to file a variance, doesn't it?
There's a variance fee, there's an application fee.
The other option is that there's no option for variance. I mean, this is putting...
It's a choice.
This is putting the same regulation, and this is putting the same regulations on these that we would have for generators, that we would have for compressors, we would have for pool equipment, we're having for...
It seems to me, as Susan said, if there is a great deal of cost, then it's up to the homeowner as to whether he or she wishes to file for variance. Otherwise, they have to just comply with the code.
Yes.
Right.
Nobody's forcing them to comply with the code. They can ask for a variance, but if they don't get it, they have to comply with the code. But it's their only way to avoid the code.
And the ZBA meetings, you know, you would apply, this would go before them typically in one meeting, and then you'd be done.
Yeah.
So it's part of it, anyway. Part of a filing.
If, once you filed for the ZBA...
It would be just for the variance.
Exactly, just for the variance part.
If you work with village staff, if you're, you're meeting with village staff, and if it's code compliant, then...
Then you're, then you're good.
You're good.
Right.
I think Drew's saying it's relatively painless.
It's relatively painless to go to the ZBA. They're a good group of guys. They're fair, and, you know, meetings are, typically, applications are before one meeting.
It's really just dealing with aesthetics. It's not dealing with anything else.
And we have crackerjack counsel with this evening.
Yay.
So if you want to move it forward, somebody should make a motion to add the variance option into legislation, and the other decision is whether or not you want to close the hearing tonight.
So move as amended.
What should you want to do about the hearing?
I think, I think, my, I think let's keep the hearing open.
Okay.
In case there are any comments on this. It's easy enough. We're, it's already open. It'll take us 30 seconds. If no one, if there's no other comments, we'll just close the hearing.
Okay. So you know what? You don't even have to make a motion on that, then. Since the hearing is going to be open, you can just leave it as is. And we'll modify the law.
Okay, so we'll, we don't need a motion to modify...
The motion is now, no, the motion is not needed. You just need to have a motion to move, to adjourn the public hearing to February...
Next meeting, 8th?
February 14th.
14th. Oh, right.
Those dates are incorrect. It's not the 7th and 25th. It's the 14th and 28th.
Yeah.
You just need a motion to adjourn to February 14th.
So can I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we'll make that change and circulate a revised local law.
Thank you. I mean, do you think that's the right way to go?
Yeah, I, I do.
I mean, it's, to me, it seems pretty straightforward to make a, have it conform with our other regulations dealing with similar equipment.
Right. That's exactly. In fact, I was disappointed in myself that I didn't initially think about it.
Give yourself a break.
It just delayed it by a couple of weeks. That's, that's, all right, all right. Greg?
I haven't got the resolution done, or anything?
Yeah, exactly. There we go.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Moving to resolution number two. Considering comments on the draft short-form environmental assessment proposed million, proposed by, for Millionaire Development, redevelopment development project at the Westchester County Airport.
That's a confusing title, right there. We'll clean that up. Whereas Westchester County has announced the availability of review and comment on a draft short-form environmental assessment for the Millionaire redevelopment and development project at Westchester County Airport with a comment period of January 17th to February 17th, 2023. And whereas the purpose of this project is to provide good general aviation, which is private, corporate charter, and other operations other than commercial operators, hangar, and fixed-based operators, terminal space for existing airport users and for additional Millionaire customers, while also accommodating existing general aviation needs. And the, this assessment evaluates the environmental, social, and economic consequences of the proposed Millionaire redevelopment development project. And whereas Millionaire redevelopment project includes the following two phases. Phase one is the construction of a 50,400-square-foot hangar and a 17,150-foot fixed-based operator terminal building with the associated parking, sidewalk, and landscaped areas. Phase one was an improved, was an improvement approved in the 2016 lease entered into by the prior county administration between the County of Westchester and White Plains Aviation Partners, doing business as Millionaire White Plains, an FBO at the airport, which is fixed-based operator. Phase one was not completed until 2021, when Millionaire was required to construct the stormwater management improvements for phase one by the current administration. Phase two would involve the proposed future construction of a 78,344-square-foot hangar that was not approved in the 2016 lease between the County and Millionaire on the site of a smaller existing hangar for light GA aircraft. Additional stormwater improvements were required if phase two was to proceed. The DEA does not constitute county approval of phase two. And whereas the village, the Board of Trustees would like to submit the following comments. One, Westchester County is currently operating, updating its airport master plan. So due to the size and potential impact of the Millionaire redevelopment project, this project should not proceed while the airport master plan update is pending. Two, Rybrook and Westchester County have a longstanding policy of no expansion operations, of operations at the airport. This project would clearly add more hangar space and will allow more airplanes in the new hangar. Although the DEA indicates the Millionaire does not intend to expand operations and could reduce the amount of what they call ferry flights needed into and out of the airport to locations where there are more hangar space, there is nothing preventing more planes and more flights to occur at an expanded hangar. The county should enforce the longstanding policy and commitment to the no-expansion, which includes any additional square footage for the hangars of the fixed-based operators. Three, general aviation or non-commercial airline aircraft already make up the vast majority of the air traffic and flights at the airport and collectively account for the majority of violations of the voluntary restraint from flying program, which encourages no flights between midnight and 6:30 PM. Larger hangars to accommodate more airplane space can lead to more flights, the use of more de-icing fluid, and potentially more noise and more violations overnight with their attendant adverse impacts on public health and quality of life. And four, the project will disturb approximately 10.74 acres within the 22.4-acre Millionaire lease area and will result in an increase of about 0.77 acres of impervious surface. As a result, additional stormwater management improvements are needed to be implemented to address this additional disturbance of the new 78,244-square-foot hangar in phase two. The village of Rybrook is very concerned with any addition of stormwater or the potential for releasing more de-icing fluid into either the Blind Brook or the Kansagow River that supplies drinking water to the village. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook, hereby approves the concerns raised in this resolution and directs the village administrator to submit these comments on the draft short-form environmental assessment to the Westchester County and the representatives of Millionaire. And be it further resolved, the village also encourages its residents to submit comments on this proposed project and draft short environmental assessment by the February 17th, 2023 deadline for public comments.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
So I think this resolution is fairly straightforward. It is our comments, what would become our official comments on this proposed development. I think it's eye-opening that, you know, we had a tour of the stormwater facilities at the airport recently, where we were told that the retention ponds do release water into the Blind Brook on larger storms. This would add to, this proposed development would add to the amount of stormwater runoff coming from the airport. And the county is currently undergoing a master plan process at the airport, so it behooves them to wait for that master plan to see what the comments are on, on stormwater especially, and future development of increasing size, which would add to more aviation coming in and out. We were told that general aviation makes up approximately 85% of the flights coming in and out of Westchester County Airport. So this would be adding to that percentage, that it's really not, the commercial flights that are the majority is overwhelmingly non-commercial, the non-commercial flights that make this up.
And growing, and growing, and that, and there's...
And the concern there, yeah, and the concern there is they're built, they're talking about building an additional hangar of 78,000, 78,000 square foot on top of what they just constructed of 50,400-square-foot hangar and a 17,000 fixed-based operator terminal building. So what all that will do is create more space for more general aviation, as the mayor said. And their argument in the assessment is that there'll be less flights because there'll be less ferry flights, they call it, because they can't stay there. They don't have the space in the terminals. So they say right now, they...
But that's why they have more flights.
So that's why they, right now, they're saying in the assessment that they drop off and then have to go to another airport and then come back. So there'd be less flights. But there's, if you build it, you know...
They will come.
Yeah.
Well, I also know that they do not adhere to our, the timing.
The voluntary non-flight.
Yeah.
What is it?
The non-curfew.
The non-curfew, the voluntary non-flight timing.
If that's why there are 85% of the flights of that airport are not adhering to the time...
No, the percentage of the, the percentage outside of the voluntary curfew are, are not 85%. But I mean, it's, it's, it's typically those types of flights that are...
It is not benefiting the residents to have additional general aviation flights.
I mean, I'm not hearing any upside to the village of Rybrook to allow them to do this.
No.
Who makes the decision?
No, and I would, and I would think...
There's a long process. It's the environmental process. They're going through, they have to go through the EA, the assessment process. I think the county's lead agency, and they have to go through the whole environmental review. But there's also litigation involved in this particular issue between the county and, prior litigation in the county and Millionaire.
Because they already built it without going through the permit.
Without authorization.
Some of it was, no, they did some of it under, I don't want to get into it, but it's, some of it was built under prior approvals, and there was a question about what was required under the prior approvals and prior administrations.
Right.
And now the current administration maybe has a different opinion or different, feel they have different rights on the ability to build it, and that's what's revised, that's what's, that's why this is all going through. It gets very messy from the prior approvals to what they want to do now and what's completed in terms of stormwater.
And the income from this facility is all goes to the county?
No, the income goes to, stays at the airport.
Yeah. I mean, what, we don't see any of that.
It doesn't come back...
Indirectly, maybe.
Indirectly, maybe sales tax, maybe, maybe stuff like that. But, but the money that's raised at the airport, generated at the airports generally stays at the airport.
Right. But that's, they must be doing phenomenal there. If it's 80%, if it's that, or that private, 85% is unbelievable.
It's one of the busier airports in the state in terms of total flights.
Yeah. Yeah, the third busiest, they say.
It's...
I, I think we have to have a separate conversation...
Third or fourth among similar-sized airports.
Yeah.
If I can, if, if we can have a separate conversation on a different day of what are they doing to make sure that our residents are safe? I think that we should think about that with the noise and the fumes and the whole dealing with the POSAs, et cetera.
De-icing fluids.
De-icing, exactly. I think that we, since the growth of this airport is on the increasing, I think we have to have that conversation.
Well, thankfully, that's why we have an airport advisory committee within Rybrook. And I thank trustee Fisher for being the liaison to that and bringing this to our attention. And, and we're, and we have representatives on the county, on the county's airport advisory board. So we do have representation from the village, both in the form of our own committee and on the county's advisory board. And we certainly appreciate all of our community members who are part of that.
Yep. And we do have, get monthly reports from the county on type, who's violating, types of capital projects they're doing. And the county also has an airport advisory board. Some of their comments and concerns were also listed in the backup on the agenda. So, yeah, there's a, and we have commented, based on the feedback from our airport committee, we've been commenting on the master plan topics, things like noise. And as you said, the noise, the de-icing, the stormwater, all these issues are all issues that affect us here.
Right. And the county, at those meetings, there has been a commitment not to change the term, what am I, the terminal use agreement?
Yeah, the terminal use agreement.
Terminal use agreement, which would be disastrous.
Yes. So the key items in the terminal use agreement is the limitation, keeping of four gates maximum, and also just, probably the most important item is the 230 passengers allowed maximum per half hour. So that's the other one that's very important to us, probably one of the most key. And this is all grandfathered only because of the terminal use agreement. You couldn't put that in place now.
You could not.
And we still have the parking garage issue going on, right? That's still pending?
It's a separate issue.
Yeah. So what would this, this resolution specifically is just for the environmental assessment form for the proposed development at Millionaire?
And the county and the village has always had the position of no expansion. So the way they're, some, some are saying they're getting around this is this isn't expansion because it's going to reduce flights. There's a lot of questions about that statement.
Okay.
Adding a lot more space for, for airplanes.
Yeah. And runoff.
Yeah.
Larger footprint. Any other comments, questions?
No.
Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three. Considering an agreement between the village of Rybrook and Executive Corner Deli and Catering.
Whereas the current food and caterer provided to the, at the Anthony J. Pacilpa Center, Hubbard's Cover, no longer wants to provide the service to AJP. And whereas the village of Rybrook Senior Center coordinator, Elizabeth Roadfeld, seeks to utilize Kevin Almashi of Executive Corner Deli and Catering for food and catering services. And whereas the village of Rybrook seeks to enter into an agreement with Executive Corner Catering, Deli and Catering to provide food and catering services to the AJP Senior Center. And whereas, under the proposed agreement, the cost of meals would be $10 per meal, split equally between the seniors, which is up from $9.50 currently. Non-resident seniors will pay the entire $10 and the village, and the village of Rybrook. And whereas, to adhere to the proposed agreement, the village of Rybrook trustees agree to revise the license and fee schedule to allow for the small price increase. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed agreement between the village of Rybrook and Executive Corner Deli and Catering for food, subject to modification by council. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
I'd like to thank Hubbard's Covers for their service in the past. Glad we were able to find a replacement at a very minimal increase, and that we're able to continue to provide this service to the residents of Rybrook and the non-residents of Rybrook at a, at an increased price. We were not...
50 cents more.
Well, 50, well...
25 cents each.
25 cents each, but for non-residents, they pay the full 50 more. And we're not subsidizing for non-residents. So, any questions or comments?
Nope. Nope.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering granting an extension of planned unit development site plan approval for Nine Hundred King Street LLC.
Whereas on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approved a local law amending chapter two fifty, sections two fifty dash fourteen of the village code, and whereas the local law revised the village of Rybrook zoning code pursuant to the planned unit development sites and created a new section of the village code to allow for redevelopment at Nine Hundred King Street owned by Nine Hundred King Street Associates for age-restricted and senior housing purposes, and whereas on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Board of Trustees approved the PUD concept plan proposed by Nine Hundred King Street Associates, and whereas under, under the village code, the PUD site plan approval is valid for a period of eighteen months, with extensions authorized to be granted for periods not to exceed six months, and whereas the PUD approved by the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees expires in March two thousand twenty-three, and whereas on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, Rybrook received a letter from Veneziano and Associates on behalf of Nine Hundred King Associates requesting an extension for a period of six months, now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves or denies the PUD site plan approval extension for a period of X months. So the board should just fill in the blanks.
Thank you, Chris. So, given that the code calls for periods not to exceed six months, I would suggest that we do six months, and I would be in favor of approving this. So I would, I would circle the approves and write in the term six. Now, just as a quick question, I'm assuming that is from the original expiration date? Or is that from the current date?
No, original expiration date. So I believe this actually expires in March.
September?
March.
Yeah, expires in March.
Six months from March, because it hasn't, it hasn't expired yet, so there's no, you know, they're, they're still within the window, so six months from March, which puts them to September.
Till September, right.
Yes. Okay, so can I possibly have a motion and second as stated?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. I for one hope that this project goes forward, you know, we have the extension on the, in front of us right now, hopefully within that time we can start to move this project forward, which would be great. I think that this is a good project for the village of Rybrook, I felt that way, we went through an extensive EIS process, and we hope that this doesn't get stalled for too much longer.
I must say, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, it's a good project, and I think it would be really valuable to the village of Rybrook if it's built. My concern is that for eighteen months, nothing has happened, and so therefore I am against extending any more time to this developer. I feel I need to be convinced that he is serious about building something. I have not seen it over the past eighteen months.
I certainly understand your frustration, trustee Heiser. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
No.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number five, on a completely different note, considering accepting a hot dog stand as a donation.
With or without hot dogs?
No hot dogs.
Whereas.
There's not even any crowd or anything, just no.
Whereas Polo Grollio of thirty-four Elizabeth Street, Ry, New York, seeks to donate a hot dog stand in memory of her deceased brother, Michael Grollio, and whereas the hot dog stand has an estimated value of thirty-five hundred dollars, and whereas the village of Rybrook is interested in accepting this donation, now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees, Village of Rybrook Board, acting as the Board of Directors of the Friends of Rybrook, hereby accepts a donation of the hot dog stand valued at thirty-five hundred dollars, be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
So I know that when we approved the fire truck, the previous mayor was never allowed to drive it. I hope I get to serve a hot dog out of that at some point.
And I should, for full disclosure, the, the, Michael Grollio who passed away also is, as Shari Malillo, our confidential secretary of the administrators, is her cousin, and he's been nice enough to, to provide that to us in past years for our events like Winter Fest and other events, so that's actually where that came from, so the family thought that would be nice to donate to the village, so we are very appreciative.
Truly appreciate it, and for, for the, for everything in the past, and, and.
And yes, you could serve hot dogs out of the new store.
Thank you.
Of course.
We will think of him whenever we, the mission, use it.
Absolutely, and it's, and it's, it'd certainly be appreciated by our residents during those events in which we use it.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes, and thank you.
Yes. Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering the approval of the minutes for the meeting held on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. And then we have an add-on resolution, resolution number seven, considering setting a public hearing on our proposed local law creating chapter one fifty-eight, section two-point-one of the village code concerning seasonal leaf blower restrictions.
Okay, now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing, oh yeah, shall hold a public hearing on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, on the proposed local law creating chapter one fifty-eight, section two-point-one of the village code concerning seasonal leaf blowers.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Just a quick question, do we think it'll be ready by the fourteenth, or do we need the twenty-eighth?
Yes, so let me just first thank our counsel, Drew Gammels, for drafting it, first thing I want to start with. But, so I will get to your question, Mayor Klein, just one second, but I just want to go take a couple steps back first. So Administrator Bradbury, Deputy Mayor Heiser, and myself, as well as Sustainability Chair Bridgette Dix, did meet with the New York State Landscape Association again to hear some concerns that they had with the proposed local law. The meeting went mostly well, there were some concerns, again, that they stipulated the end, but our last meeting, the committee said they were not interested in making any changes at this time. So again, unless anything changes from now until the fourteenth, that actually makes it a little bit easier on my end to kind of corral them together for the logistical challenge of making sure we have members present to present it, any questions that the board may have, and any members of the public, and as well as any landscapers that may show up to the public hearing on the fourteenth. Now, if for some reason they're not ready on the fourteenth, then I would just ask that if the board be willing to table it until the twenty-first.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, sorry, yes.
I was just going to say, my concern as a result of that meeting that we had is that they have very strong feelings about this issue, and why not give them until the twenty-eighth so they can marshal whatever arguments they're going to want to make?
And that's what I said though, too, is it's just that, look, if you guys need that time in order to do so, now they have indicated that they do not, so that's what they told me. Now, I'm more than happy to tell them again, like, again, I told them there is no rush for this.
And it's February.
But, yes, in February, it's on twenty-eighth or the fourteenth. Now, I personally, it doesn't matter me one way or another, if we have it the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth, but they have stipulated to me that they are ready to proceed.
Are there people that were not available on the twenty-eighth, or?
So now that I have the correct dates, I can actually go back to them and bring that forward to them, so I will be willing to find out, because I'm trying to get a few of them to come to kind of explain it to everyone, as well as to bring members of the public to kind of show support work against why this local law is important to them.
So one consideration, just realize you're, if you do it on the fourteenth, it is Valentine's Day, right? So that may limit some people from, from coming, so just keep that in mind, whatever, whatever date you choose, you know, you just want to, maybe you want to be mindful.
I'm thinking the twenty-eighth is a, a better date.
I will add in my experience in all the other municipalities that have done anything with leaf blowers, there has been a crowd for public hearing even when it wasn't expected, so that's our experience.
I think twenty, I don't want to ruin anyone's Valentine's Day, so.
The one thing I would say also is, just to keep, the biggest comment, just for, for the board to think about, as something, the biggest comment we heard from the landscapers was the desire to, to allow for electric leaf blowers or, you know, for electric leaf blowers during the season.
That you can't use gas?
For, yeah, so that you could blow off the, just for hardscape, pathways, driveways, the sustainability committee do not agree with that, right? But, but I just want to let, just to know what to expect, that was something they said, well, you know, most, a lot of the customers do want their driveways or hardscapes removed, so even if it's using the electric. The other side of that is sometimes that's hard to enforce, would, you know, are they doing the grass or the, the hardscape, but I just want to give you a little preview on maybe what you'll hear.
I'm looking at these comparisons, a lot of these towns, and, you know, I guess some, some mention no leaf blowers at all, some mention just gasoline, some mention gas and electric, I mean, they do, they're very.
It's all over the board.
Across the board, yeah.
That's actually.
Pretty middle of the road, I think.
Well, right now, we're probably more have them than not, I think, we're probably behind even on.
Right, we're probably behind, but I'd say we are not at either extreme within, within the proposed local law, where it's, you know, it's, there's precedent in other communities, and especially communities immediately bordering on.
And I may add though, too, they drafted it in mind, like, to make it similar to, like, the city of Ry, so that way.
Which is probably one of the most strict, right?
But also just to make it a little bit easier for the landscapers, the way the committee views it, so that way, if, because we're neighboring communities, the restrictions are similar, so that way they don't have to learn, like, new restrictions.
It's good that it's similar for both, if you adopt it that way, but it is some of the more strict, it is one of the more strict legislation, so that's the policy, the policy question, question before you.
And Ms. Bradbury, as you pointed out though, too, one of the concerns they did have was allowing them, or letting them use electric leaf blowers to use it for, like, walkways, et cetera, during the times that would be banned, but the committee did have the concern of if you would be able to tell the difference between electric and gas, and just to avoid that complication. Now, again, as I mentioned to them, that the ultimate decision, of course, will rely with you guys as the board, so, I mean, that's something that they have to concern with, but if it's something that, of course, that you guys are willing to grant them, then that's something I could tell them that they have to look at again.
Given that the fourteenth is Valentine's Day, and I'm probably the only person on this board who's really not affected by Valentine's Day.
Is that true?
I would suggest making it on the twenty-eighth.
That's totally fine, fair enough, again, I don't want to get any angry calls from anybody that I ruin their Valentine's Day.
Everyone okay with the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
I won't be here.
Okay. Are you okay with that? All right, let's do this on the twenty-eighth.
If I may ask though, does anybody have any concerns with the legislation as it stands now?
Yes, I do. I think they should allow electric and work our way into this, I don't think we should just be, stop it completely, I think we should go from get rid of the gas to try the electric and see how that goes, and go from there.
Yeah, the problem we've had with, with that, and it's been discussed a lot, is that it becomes an issue of enforcement.
Yes.
They're pretty, they sound a lot different.
They sound a lot, but.
It's pretty obvious, I think.
If leaf blowers are being used, we're going to get a lot of calls in saying that, you know, my, my neighbor's using a gas blower, gas-powered leaf blower, we go out to investigate, it's electric, it's going to be a lot of staff time involved there.
Well, actually, what the neighbor will probably say is, my neighbor is using a leaf blower without specifying, then we have to go out to affirm that it's only electric and not gas.
Right.
And that was one of the concerns that they had, also, we just don't want to create, like, an extra burden for our police department, that they would have to take a drive out there and have to deal with that complication. And I also want to stress this point, too, as part of the local efforts, again, we tend to do a huge, like, public outreach campaign, so that way, again, the leaf, all the residents, as well as the landscapers are fully aware of, by the time this law takes effect, exactly what the stipulations are in it.
Well, they also, at the meeting, made reference to what I thought were very large tracts of land, but not Rybrook.
We don't have that, a lot of that in Rybrook.
Yeah, we don't have that, and so I don't know how many of our residents are going to be clamoring for the ability to blow the leaves off their driveways and hard tack, as, as Chris said, I just don't know if that's really a critical issue in our village.
And then the other thing was homeowners, are homeowners also restricted from using electric leaf blowers?
It applies to residents and as well as landscapers.
Yeah, that's, a lot of people, a lot of homeowners go out there with those electric blowers and.
But again, it also, again, it does exempt the fall from September.
I know, I know the months, yeah, yeah.
I think also part of it is, what are you, what do you want to, what's the goal of the program, and I think that's important for the board to, you know, is it more the environmental issues, is it the noise issues, is it both, you know, because there's different aspects to each one and what you want to try to accomplish. So I think deciding which policies or which issues are most important, or if they're all important, you know, and weighing that is something that, that.
This is probably the pollution, right, and, and the noise, I think the electric ones are quieter, you know, you know, the states now, in three years, now you build a new house now, you got to get all electric appliances now, you can't buy gas appliances pretty soon, it's crazy. And look what they're doing, they're wanting to use electric, so we're going to.
Kind of put further.
Oh, it's just, it's just, it's a big circle, more pollution in the air.
And didn't they talk about the battery life on some of these devices and whether, basically, it's just not going to work?
You have a generator running, yeah, with the electric, if it's the commercial operators, they put a generator on their, on their truck, they've got the generator running just to charge the batteries.
Very loud.
It's loud, and.
Oh, it's terrible, the pollution is terrible on those. So what are we doing to enforce something like that?
It, we don't.
Right now it would be loud.
Well, right now it would be loud.
On the trucks, yeah.
Yeah, but they're using the gas-powered ones right now.
Yeah.
Well, let's see what the public, let's see what the public has to say, right?
That's totally fine, but, so, so when I go to my next sustainability meeting, is any points that any of you would like me to bring to them for us to address?
Well, you heard my point.
I think, I think that we don't have a lot of people here who are going to report back to their friends, and I, so I think perhaps an outreach article in the Westland News of noticing it, not just noticing it, but in advance, telling them about it, I think sooner rather than later, so that way we can get all of the input from the residents, even if we don't have an open.
We can call and ask if they do an article on it, is that what you, I think that's what you're asking.
Sure, I think that would be great. So the residents can weigh in.
Residents also.
And Rybrook residents, sure, if you want to write something up.
That's fine, yeah, and I have asked, and I've also tasked the committee members to, to as well, in their own circles, to please.
Because I have to tell you, there are some people that are for this and many people are against it.
Which I understand.
So it's going to be a tough one, and maybe we can leave it open for the vote by when I return.
That's how you're going to.
We'll see.
As Council Gammel said, we tend to have packed, and to my understanding, this is before I was working for the village, but the last time we did this, the landscapers pulled up a whole room. So again, we can, I think it's fair to expect a large crowd when we do hold this on the twenty-eighth. So, point being, trustee Epstein, that it's very likely that we'll have no choice but to continue it to the next meeting.
But the nice thing is Michael will be serving hot dogs from the back.
All right, so we have a motion and second to set it for the twenty-eighth.
Motion.
No, we already do.
Oh. That was a test.
Good try.
Okay, trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, administrator's report.
Just have one item, I just wanted, so in light of the, of the, there's been some discussion in the community, also about, and there's an article in Westmore on the schools, a little touched on about Rybrook, but, you know, with the Bills player, Damar Hamlin, who, who went into cardiac arrest, you know, raises questions about, you know, what do you, what do we have locally? So one of the things we have, we have one of the more extensive and active heart-healthy programs that are around for the municipalities. You know, Rybrook has defibrillators and, defibrillators in all of our buildings, in all of our parks. We were one of the, the first to put it, every park that we have has defibrillators. We've increased signage. We've done, police and fire obviously also has them as well as the defibs. But we also do programming for our employees. We have a cardiac emergency response plan, the only one, I think, in the county for municipalities, which has a lot of things in it. We, we have meetings throughout the year with EMS, police. We go over any incident that occurred in the past. Alashon is also on, on that, on that, on that group as well. Dana Colasante is also very active. So, you know, they have, they've kind of taken a big lead in that from the community perspective. In terms of parks and recreation, all of our, you know, our rec coaches have to get training on CPR, first aid, and AED training, on how to, how to be comfortable, familiar with it. And they have to go through the course in order, we always make sure that there's people that have that training who are at every game. And we encourage, there's also a process that we put on all the bags that we hand out, where there's a tag for the coaches to go over with the other coaches, whether they're visiting or here internally, you know, about where everything's located, who has what, and making sure there's a process, a pre-game process that they go over before the game. So, you know, we're trying to make those strides and do what we can to try to keep the residents safe. That's all I have for today.
All right. Thank you, Chris. And as this is a public meeting, any comments from the public? Seeing none, the next meetings of the Board of Trustees are February fourteenth